Call this Altoona City Council meeting to order Monday, July 14th at 6:00 PM. We will now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Lynda, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Beatty.
Here.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Here.
Councilwoman Clinitch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Here.
Councilman Ickes.
Here.
Councilman Kelly.
Here.
Mayor Pacifico.
Here.
Okay, we have a presentation on the agenda tonight. Joining us from Peoples Natural Gas is Doug Ming to talk about their service line replacements.
Perfect. Can everyone hear me? Can you hear me now? Perfect. So, no, thank you for the opportunity to discuss the projects that Peoples Gas is doing in the city of Altoona. My name is Doug Minig. I'm the Restoration Manager. And with me is Nick Paradise. He's our Public Relations Manager here this evening. So as you're all very aware, Peoples is actively doing a lot of work in the city of Altoona. And I wanted to briefly explain the reason why we are doing said work. And so I have a very brief presentation that I just wanted to walk through. It's only a few slides long. So, just like your house or your car, ongoing maintenance is important to do. You know, overtime, you might be doing oil change or getting your gutters replaced, but sometimes you have to make the decision to replace those items. And that is why we have our LTIP program. And so for those of you that don't know, LTIP stands for a Long Term Infrastructure Improvement Plan, which is a 20-year program that Peoples is doing across our whole footprint. And it's actually replacing 3,000 miles of our aging pipeline infrastructure by the year 2034. And so we're currently on year 11 of our 20-year plan. And so with that, we are committed to keep our natural gas delivery safe and reliable, environmentally friendly, and state-of-the-art. And so the target pipeline that we're replacing out of our ground is bare steel, and we're replacing it with our new plastic pipe. So over the past decade, across our whole company footprint, we've placed about 1,000 miles of pipe. And so specific towards Altoona, since 2020, we have done 160, 176 projects, equivalent to $21.9 million worth of investment in that infrastructure and in the roads of replacing. And approximately, that is around 40 miles of pipe we have replaced. But there's still more work to do. So talking with our design team that designs the projects and our remaining infrastructure that exists in the city of Altoona, we have about 63 miles left to go. And so this past, for 2025, we're replacing around 10 miles, and our current plan is to continue replacing about 10 miles a year. But obviously, that is just our plan. Things can change. And there's a number of different variables that can change that plan. One is our Pipeline Integrity Group designs the projects and identifies the ones that have to be replaced before others. And so I'm talking about city of Altoona, but we are globally talking about our whole infrastructure here at Peoples. And so city of Altoona has some target pipeline that we're trying to replace. Obviously, operational need, and so our commitment is to serve our customers. And if our infrastructure is, you know, tested, so to say, then those may be, some areas may be targeted sooner rather than others. And then, obviously, the location of the work, if it's in the street sidewalk, or perhaps working with other utilities or paving programs, because I know we receive the paving program Altoona, we try to sync up our work as best as possible to minimize the disturbance of said work. And so as you probably experienced, construction work occurs in multiple phases and multiple contractors. And so we might have one contractor that does the mainline replacement, but then we bring other contractors in to restore the streets, to restore the sidewalks, and it occurs in phases. And like I said before, we do our best to try to sync up our work with other utilities or with the city of Altoona's, like paving program, as best as we possibly can to minimize disruption as much as we can. And so it's kind of hard to see on this map, and I'd be happy to provide it to you, but this is a snapshot of your whole city, and this is showing all the work that we've already replaced from 2020 to year-to-date. And it also identifies the areas where we have active construction and areas that we still have restoration work to do. And by restoration, I mean the paving of the streets or sidewalk work or grass work. And so while construction may cause temporary disruptions, the result will be safer, more reliable infrastructure that benefits the community for years to come. And we do our best, like I said, to coordinate work, but I understand there's frustration that comes with active construction, which naturally occurs anyways. And so one thing I wanted to highlight, which I'd be happy to demo to anyone that has questions, is our website actually has a lot of this information on it that is readily available for anyone to have access. And if you actually navigate through our website to our construction page, you can actually see the status of all of our construction jobs on that website itself. And there's different colors and different definitions to show, hey, this project's coming down, the pipeline, we're going to start it within the next few weeks versus is it active construction or do we still have pending restoration? And so anybody can go to that particular website, type in their address, and they're wanting to know what the status of the construction job is, they can find that out through the webpage. And there's other basic information that may exist on there. And then, finally, this is an example, I'm sorry, of what that webpage looks like. If you go to that section of the webpage, and the URL is right there, that's an example of what the map can look like. And as you can see, there's different colors mean different things. If it's active construction, ready for construction, or in the restoration phase. But obviously, if there's any questions, here's my email address and then Nick's email address as well, if there's any questions or concerns that may exist out in the public.
I got a question.
Yes.
Now, New York State, they are banning gas appliances, see? And then you're doing all this infrastructure here in Pennsylvania. I'm confused then. You know, yeah.
Hey, Dan. Hey, you can ask this question offline. We got, we got the rest of the meeting, we got to get through, okay? All right.
Any other questions I can field?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, I have to announce that we had an executive session after our last work session for real estate personnel and potential litigation. We'll now open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to under five minutes. Thank you.
Hi, I'll rebrief today. My name's Mayor, City Councilman, and Guest. I'm Chuck Lamar, and I'd like to bring council's attention to the current conditions of Logan, excuse me, of Logontown. I have circular, for your convenience, I like to have passed out to the members of council, please. I know you don't want me to pass them out, right? Beginning in 1992 and lasting over a decade, the Logontown community fought an intense and much publicized battle with the Altoona YMCA to save their local park. The neighborhood conflict brought a lot of attention to Logontown's seriously deteriorating condition. 25 years ago, on July 6th, excuse me, 25 years ago, on July 6th, Altoona hired its first director in three years, Dave McFarland, who quickly focused his attention on the conditions, on the condition of Logontown during the ongoing dealing with the YMCA. This isn't about the YMCA, I might add. He restarted a past program, the Logontown Revitalization Strategy Area Plan, that primarily obtained grants for needed home, street, and sidewalk improvements for the Logontown residents. The Around Altoona and Crime Watch Program were launched within Logontown during this emphasis on improvement. However, the revitalization plan dwiggled and ceased to continue while much repair was still needed in this community of nearly 3,000 persons. During the last few months, I've canvassed the Logontown area and observed much repair still not completed. Although I haven't investigated other parts of Altoona as closely as Logontown area in comparison, Logontown itself surely appears to be in poor condition. I wish to encourage council to observe and note the current condition of Logontown and possibly initiate any available programs that might be applied to improve the area. Of course, the removal of green space would not be considered by Logontown residents as improvements. Logontown currently located, currently located when annexed into Altoona July 31st, 1912, extended from Chestnut Avenue to 22nd Avenue and 1st to 4th Streets. The area grew quickly, supplying additional housing for the ongoing increase of railroad families. Logontown bordered on the railroad, hospital, cricket field, and Juniada. Had contained 36 businesses, six churches, two schools, and three parks. This historic portion of Altoona should not be neglected. If you don't have any questions or comments, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you.
My name is Larry Carter. I live at 1105 Broadway in Altoona. The proposed changes in the regulations governing the electrical and plumbing services in Altoona will result in more businesses available to provide services, increasing competition, and the marketplace always lowers the price. The current city regulations limit the competition by allowing only 371 master electricians to provide permits, to require permits, to provide electrical and plumbing service. Changing the regulations to allow any contractor with a business license to get a permit will positively affect the price and increase the number of tradesmen available to city residents. It's necessary to have the work inspected by a third party to ensure its safety, with a written record of the inspection maintained by the city or contractor. The current ordinance requires no written record of the inspections and no evidence of the inspection results. We have competent, professional electrical plumbing firms who will thrive in a competitive marketplace. The proposed ordinance also includes technical assistance to firms who receive substandard inspections, including rescinding their license if they routinely do substandard work. The regulations that increase competition, lower prices, and provide written inspection records will result in improved services for residents of Altoona. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bridgette Jackson. I live at 313 Grant Avenue in Altoona. And I'm here as a concerned resident and community advocate compelled to speak out about the recent incident of police brutality committed by the APD. It has now been 10 days since this violent and deeply disturbing event, and yet we've heard nothing from the police department, no statement, no transparency, no acknowledgement of harm done. And as far as we know, the officer involved is still on duty. That silence is deafening, and it feels like complicity. When those sworn to protect us cause harm and are shielded from accountability, it erodes public trust. Our community deserves answers. We deserve to know. Has the officer involved, Officer Glass, has he been placed on administrative leave? Is there an independent investigation into this incident? What steps are being taken to prevent this from happening again? The longer the silence, the louder the message that justice and transparency are optional. But we're here to remind you that they are not. We are not anti-police. We are anti-brutality, anti-abuse of power, and anti-silence when our neighbors are hurt. We ask you, as our elected officials, to publicly address this incident, to demand accountability, and to commit systemic changes that ensure safety for all members of our community. If you choose silence now, you are choosing the side of injustice. But if you choose to act, you affirm that every life in this city has value, especially those that are most targeted and silenced. Thank you.
I live at 306 South 8th Street. I, until that incident, believed to our police, we're kind of, you know, pretty friendly all incidents I've ever had with them. But as a white guy, I recognize my experience isn't the same as everybody's. I think it would go a long way if the mayor, the council members, would release the body cam footage associated with that incident. And also, the incident, I believe her name was Ann Nguyen, who was arrested. The details in the paper kind of seemed like her rights may have been violated, so it'd be good to see that footage, too. Thank you.
Is this thing on? Good evening. My name is Sarah Edmiston, and I live at 2209 Fourth Avenue. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist and doctor of psychology and a community member here in Altoona. I'm also here today because I'm deeply concerned about the recent incidents involving Officer Glass and the broader pattern of police misconduct reported in this city. As a psychologist, I work closely with individuals and families navigating effects of trauma, anxiety, and mistrust. When those asked and tasked with protecting us become a source of fear or harm, and not only damages individual well-being, but it erodes the foundation of trust in the community. I urge this council to approach this matter through a trauma-informed and ethical lens. Police officers are public servants, and they must be held to standards that reflect their power and responsibility. I'm asking that the council respond transparently and proactively, not only for justice in this case, but to restore a sense of safety and trust across Altoona. Thank you.
Hello, guys. My name's Amelbe Johnson, local drag artist here, makeup artist, community member, activist. And it's been brought to my attention, onto numerous people, that here in Altoona, Pennsylvania, we are spending money where it's not needed. As of now, what we're getting information from, $92,300 is being spent on Z School LLC in Fort Lauderdale for educational training for 142 Blair County law enforcement officers. $63,900 of that cost is for the training, and $28,400 of that is for the cost of the overtime to cover police department overtime. I think it's a load of bullcrap, because if we can't even train our officers to do the right thing when they're doing injustices in our own town, why are we expecting training from elsewhere? So I think that we need to rethink that process and really hone in on that and really think, is that money really worth it? Because we have three officers who, well, two of them who are in training, who were, and their T, the person in charge of them, wasn't even doing what they were supposed to do to lead them in the right direction and training them and showing them the procedures on how to take things and how to handle situations. So I think we do, as a group, as a collective, you know, I think that that's not conducive to us at all, trying to take training from somewhere else, and we can't even do the training in the schools where we need to be. So I think we need to rethink that, that cost and that money, and cycle back, and I think come as a collective to really use our brains here and think, wow, maybe we need to come back and revisit those numbers. Thank you.
If there's no more public comment, we will close the floor. Okay, seeing none, we will close the floor and move into the resolutions.
Item A is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council meeting held Monday, June 9th, 2025. Item B is awarding the Ash Tree Treatment Project to Benetti Tree Service of Altoona in the amount of $13,410 payable from the general fund and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item C is authorizing the submission of an application to DCED for a multimodal transportation fund grant for Baker Boulevard traffic calming improvements in the amount of $1,766,973.60 with $1,592.7624 from the grant and a local match of 10% or $176,697.36. And further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item D is authorizing a right-of-way acquisition by PennDOT for a small portion of land owned by the city utilized by the Water Authority located on Mill Run Road, as shown on the attached plan, in the amount of $500, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item E is authorizing a professional services agreement between the city and Pennsylvania Municipal Code Alliance for services in accordance with the PA Construction Code, PA Uniform Construction Codes as amended, zoning and code enforcement, and all applicable local codes and ordinances pertaining thereto, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item F is approving an agreement with OpenGov for Phase 1 software for code enforcement, community development, and public works in the amount of $272,449.68, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Now, the next items, G through, what do we have here? G through K are all awarding demo bids, and they're all for G and R excavating, and they are all from the payable from City of Altoona altogether Altoona Fund and authorize the city manager to execute the documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item G is for 903 Second Avenue in the amount of $17,100. Item H is for 1010 Third Avenue in the amount of $12,200. Item I is for 509 21st Street in the amount of $9,940. Item J is for 227 Third Avenue in the amount of $13,800. Item K is for 1000 Third Avenue in the amount of $850. Item L is approving a repository bid in the amount of $525 submitted by J and R Pennsylvania Properties LLC, James Ganey of Martinsburg, for property located at 819 6th Avenue, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Now, items M through P are all by, submitted by Amarillis Rodriguez of 2311 West Chestnut Avenue, and they're all further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Item, item M is for $200, and it's for property located at 203 6th Avenue. Item N is for $200, and it's for property located at 810 6th Avenue. Item O is for $300, and it's for property at 601 Third Avenue. And item P is for $300, and it's for property at 607 Third Avenue. Are there any, anything that needs to be deleted or, well, actually pulled for a separate vote?
Yeah, I'd like to pull M, N, O, and P, please.
Okay. I'm going to call for the consent vote first on items A through L. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinitch.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the consent vote passes seven to zero. Can I use a consent vote for the rest of them? Okay, thank you. So we will use a consent vote for items M through P. Councilman Beatty.
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
No.
Councilwoman Clinitch.
No.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
No.
Councilman Ickes.
No.
Councilman Kelly.
No.
Mayor Pacifico.
No.
The vote does not pass zero to seven. We have ordinances on the agenda. The first ordinance is for introduction. It's an ordinance of the City of Altoona, Blair County, which eliminates Chapter 646-15 to 646-23 of the city code, Altoona City Code, as it pertains to amusement tax assessments. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
Sound move.
This ordinance will be introduced by Councilman Ickes. The next ordinance for introduction is an ordinance of the City of Altoona, Blair County, which authorizes the vacation and abandonment of a portion of East Altoona Avenue as depicted in the survey of color engineers pursuant to Chapter 295-8 of the Altoona City Code, and further authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a quick claim deed to the Altoona Property LLC, Aubrey Alexander, and any accompanying documentation to relinquish any right, title, and/or interest of the city, the city has or may have in said portion of East Altoona Avenue, provide severability of provisions, repeal or, and provide an effective date. Is there a council member that would like to introduce this ordinance?
Sound move.
This ordinance is introduced by Councilwoman Clinitch. The third ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Altoona, Blair County, Pennsylvania, which authorized the vacation and abandonment of a portion of East Blair Avenue as depicted in the survey of color engineers pursuant to Chapter 295-8 of the Altoona City Code, and further authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a quick claim deed to Altoona Property LLC, Aubrey Alexander, and any accompanying documentation to relinquish any right, title, and/or interest the city has or may have in said portion of East Altoona Avenue, provide severability of provisions, repeal or, and provide an effective date. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
I'll, I'll do that one, Lynda.
Okay. This ordinance is introduced by Councilman Beatty. The fourth ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Altoona, Blair County, which authorizes the vacation and abandonment of one half of an unopened portion of Lloyd Street between East Logan Avenue and East Grant Avenue pursuant to Chapter 295-8 of the Altoona City Code, and further authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a quick claim deed to Michael Coho and any accompanying documentation to relinquish any right, title, and/or interest the city has or may have in said portion of East Altoona Avenue, provide severability of provisions, that should be East Logan Avenue, provide severability of provisions, repeal or, and provide an effective date. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
Sound move.
This ordinance is introduced by Vice Mayor Ellis. The fifth ordinance for introduction is an ordinance of the City of Altoona, Blair County, which authorizes the vacation and abandonment of North 7th Avenue Alley between North 19th Street and North 20th Street pursuant to Chapter 295-8 of the Altoona City Code, further authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a quick claim deed to Holly and Michael B. and Coney, and any accompanying documentation to relinquish any right, title, or interest the City of Altoona has or may have in the said portion of East Altoona Avenue, provide severability, that also should be North 7th Avenue Alley, provide severability of provisions, repeal or, and provide an effective date. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
Sound move.
This ordinance is introduced by Councilman Butterbaugh. The next set of ordinances are for adoption. The first one was introduced by the governing body. Its incurring lease-rental debt is defined in the Pennsylvania Local Government Unit Debt Act in a principal amount not to exceed $4 million, evidenced by its guarantee of 100% of the payments due under a debt obligation of the Altoona Water Authority issued to the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority in connection with the sanitary sewer system operated by the authority and pay related expenses. Authorizing a guarantee agreement by and among this city as agreement by and among this city as guarantor, the authority and Penn Vest as lender, securing the debt obligation, pledging certain sewer system lease revenues of the city and the full faith credit and taxing power of the city in support of its guarantee, appointing a sinking fund depository in connection with such guarantee and authorizing related actions and documents. Is there a council member willing to introduce, or is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
This ordinance was, I'm sorry, I didn't get the, catch the second?
Mayor.
The mayor, okay. This ordinance was moved for adoption by the, by Councilman Butterbaugh, seconded by Mayor Pacifico. Now call the roll for a vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinage.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero. That was ordinance six. The next ordinance for adoption was introduced by Vice Mayor Ellis and it's an ordinance of the City of Altoona amending the code of the City of Altoona specifically Chapter 98 entitled Personnel Policies, adding Section 11.9 Voluntary Leave Donation Program, repealing all other ordinances or parts of laws in conflict therewith, provide severability provisions and provide an effective date. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
This ordinance was moved for adoption by council member, or I'm sorry, by Vice Mayor Ellis, seconded by Councilman Ickes, and I'll call for the vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinage.
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Ellis.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero. The next ordinance for adoption is, was introduced by Councilman Beatty and it's an ordinance of the City of Altoona amending the code of the City of Altoona, Chapter 550, entitled Property Maintenance, adopting the International Property Maintenance Code 2021 Edition, repealing all inconsistent provisions and establishing an effective date. Is there a motion for adoption?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I'll second it.
This ordinance was moved for adoption by Councilman Beatty and seconded by Councilwoman Clinage. I'll call the roll for the vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinage.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero. We have one more ordinance and it is, was introduced by Councilman Butterbaugh. It's an ordinance of the City of Altoona amending the code of the City of Altoona, Chapter 711, entitled Vehicles Storage of, changing the title of Vehicles Storage of and Parking, adding recreational vehicle and vehicle parking requirements to the code, repealing all inconsistent provisions, reaffirmation of Chapter 711 as amended, and establishing an effective date. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
This ordinance was moved for adoption by Councilman Butterbaugh. It was seconded by Councilman Beatty and I will call the roll for a vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinage.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly.
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the vote passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving on to city manager updates.
Sir, just two quick items. First, I'd like to say thank you to the council and the mayor for approving the ordinance to implement the leave donation policy. I think it goes a long way for taking care of our city employees. And I know, I appreciate that, and I know all the city employees appreciate that. The, the second one is I'd like to thank you for the support in moving forward with the OpenGov transformation. This will dramatically increase, increase our productivity. This is, helps us align all our processes, streamlines everything that we're doing and will ultimately touch every department inside the city so that we can gain operational efficiency, be more transparent, and support our taxpayers.
Thank you. Okay, council discussion items. Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to offer tonight, thank you.
Councilman Ickes.
Thank you, I also have nothing.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Uh, nothing, thanks.
Councilman Ellis.
No, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Beatty.
We did.
Councilwoman Clinage.
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. I would just like to give a thanks to the Blair Regional YMCA for the job well done hosting and organizing the race last, last Friday. That's all I have. Questions from the media, Bill?
Thank you. Would anybody care to comment on the gas company presentation?
Bill, I, I think it's an issue that a lot of the cities can, been concerned about, the conditions of the streets, and I appreciate the staff arranging for the gas company committee and, and give the presentation and I think we're all aware that we need to be more vigilant on how these projects proceed.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of that.
We need, we, we're all aware that we need to be more vigilant to be sure that these projects are proceeding, getting the streets back in a, in a usable manner.
Anyone else on that?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the patience of the staff and the patience of the residents. I have an opportunity to work with a number of contractors and the weather this year, especially in the spring, up until a few weeks ago with the storms and with the rain events has really put a lot of folks behind when it comes to making these repairs and so they're, they're in the, playing catch-up now.
Okay, thanks. Would anybody care to comment on Larry Carter's endorsement of the licensing of tradesmen proposal?
I feel Larry's presentation was very timely. I think we've heard that from developers and I think that, you know, making Altoona more friendly to rehabilitate properties and houses will go a long way to serving the city's residents in a much more cost-effective way.
And then when, does anybody know or when to expect the, what I understand would be a proposed ordinance to be introduced?
It'll be, Bill, it'll be, the first read, the introduction will happen in the August meeting and then the second read and council's opportunity to vote yea or nay will be September.
Anybody want to comment on Chuck LaMarche's request for some broad-based attention to Logentown?
Well, I think too that, say that was a timely presentation because we're looking for neighborhoods to invest in our comprehensive plan and that certainly is one that has seen a little bit of attention over the last few years and I thi, I think that would fit nicely into connecting the dots as I talk about things that have been done.
Okay.
Well, I, I think there was just a project that's completed down in Lexington.
Yep.
That really is, it's in Logentown and it's a nice six-unit building, brand new, improved sidewalks, you know, so that we, we are investing in a, in a lot of areas of the city.
We're looking to improve every neighborhood and give everybody an opportunity to see improvement.
Thank you. Would anybody care to comment on the Travis Glass situation?
Bill, I would say that it's a personnel matter, so it's not something that we can discuss publicly.
Would that go, I, I was gonna, my next question was going to be whether council wanted to respond to the request that they talk about it publicly at this point? Any thoughts on that?
Uh, no, it's a personnel matter, so we cannot comment on it publicly.
Also for you, Mike, I guess, the, also the request on releasing the body cam footage? Any, any response to that?
There we go. A formal request would have to go through proper channels, for exa, for example, it would have to go through a right-to-know request and there would be certain exemptions that would apply to body cam, so that would be my response.
Would those exceptions probably make that one a no-go or not?
Correct.
Okay. And can you say whether any administrative action has been taken against Patrolman, Patrolman Glass at this point?
Not to my knowledge, but until there is, we will have no comment.
Thank you, Mike. Can somebody explain what kind of traffic calming, I guess Nate, traffic calming devices would be, or improvements would be made to Baker Boulevard?
Bill, at this point, this is just a grant that we're submitting for that, it's probably at 40,000 feet right now, so as the plans develop, we would be looking to see what we could do there to, you know, maybe pinch the streets down a little bit.
Is that a problem area? I wasn't aware that it was.
It's, it's a well-known cut-through area from Union Avenue to Logan Boulevard, so, yeah.
It's, it's the one that parallels like the track, basically?
It's perpendicular to like Baker Mansion or Baker Bull, yeah, Baker Mansion, yeah.
Okay.
So with a lot of these things, like we just get the, the framework in my, in, in the plan so that we can, you know, submit for the grant and throughout that process we'll refine what we do and seek public input on all that, so.
Has there been requests from that neighborhood for, for such stuff?
Over the years, we've just had a multitude of speed complaints, drainage complaints, so we're trying to capture them all here.
Has, has that increased since the, the bridge project there kind of forces, because I end up going past there a lot?
Why? No, I think it did at first. I'm not sure if it still has or not, but I think some people have gone down Union Avenue and found they couldn't go anywhere, so they would cut through, but I think it's probably...
Most of it's coming across on Ward Avenue.
Yeah.
From down Union, across Ward, up to Logan, but, but Baker Boulevard, since the, since PennDOT did the access closures on, on Logan Boulevard between Ward and Plank Road, it made a lot, made for a much busier, Baker Boulevard with traffic and people cutting across from Union to, to Logan Boulevard.
Okay.
They're also cutting across O'Nida Avenue.
O'Nida?
Yes. So it is increased.
Okay. And Dave, why did you ask to pull M, N, O, and P since the, the, what do you call it? I'm blanking out, the...
Repository.
Yeah, the repository.
Since it's a local person that is a...
That's, that's, it, that's the address given, but that's not the owner, at least as of, when I researched it, that was not the owner of that property.
Oh, so it's actually not a local...
We don't know. I have no idea.
Okay. And Chris, how, how will the, I mean, I know you explained a little bit, but how will the, was it called OpenGov? How will that help?
Right now, there are over 2,000 cities in the United States that are using OpenGov as their, their software package for government operations. One in three people in the United States receive digital services from OpenGov. What we're looking at is enterprise asset management. We'll be able to catalog all our assets, we'll be able to assign work, track those work requests. We will be able to estimate, assign, and track labor, equipment, materials, and vendors, and it'll help Nate and Public Works with infrastructure planning, with asset scenarios and the, the biggest pieces that will have data-driven plans for all future public works. The code enforcement side, we're going to be able to create a public-facing portal. It'll help streamline the application process inside codes. We'll be able to assign workflows with fewer manual touchpoints. The system will sync across all departments, so there'll be no more silos inside city departments. Everybody will have the real-time data and it requires no cumbersome IT support, so the staffs can change workflow and, and launch forms as they need. On the financial piece, which is the second phase of the implementation, we're going to centralize our accounting system, general ledger, AP, purchasing, fixed assets, cash receipts.
Wait, could you, I didn't, wasn't, wasn't able to keep up there, just to...
Sure, so when we move over to the financial management, the finance piece, it's on phase two, we're going to centralize all our accounting. That will include general ledger, accounts payable, purchasing, accounts receivable, all our fixed assets, our cash receipting, and our bank reconciliations. We're going to eliminate all the paper. It'll be a completely auditable process. All the documents will reside in one place. For financial reporting, we're going to have self-service reports. Finance will be able to work real-time with every department head, they'll be able to see their spend in real-time. Council will be able to see, we'll be able to update council on a regular basis and it creates the financial transparency for the taxpayers. It's all cloud-based, so it becomes a single source of strategic decision-making. On the tax revenue and collection side, we will be able to streamline all our processes in tax collection. We have the ability to do real property, personal property, vehicle property. We'll also be able to streamline all our business licensing and the tax that goes on with any of those aspects. We'll be able to look at cash receipting, all the back office support will be fully integrated. And then when we get to budget and performance, what we're going to be able to do is set goals and track all our metrics, and this is one of the things that I've talked about extensively, increasing the operational efficiency of, of how we operate the city government. And this is going to allow us to do this because we're going to have real-time measurable data. We're also going to be able to use the collaborative tools that are part of this process so that we can automate our budget process. It'll also help us, let us become more efficient at capital planning. It'll also give us the ability to do some workforce planning where we'll know the sunk cost of benefits of onboarding, offboarding, and then for, for finance, what it'll do at the end of the year is we'll be able to do a digital publication which will come in line with the Government Finance Officers Association of how the, the best practice of delivering a budget presentation. We're going to be able to look at procurement and contract management. We're going to be able to do solicitations and solicitation development, engage with suppliers, we're going to be able to evaluate pricing, again, with the artificial intelligence that's built into the platform. Contract management, we'll go paperless, we'll be proactive and efficient, and then we'll have milestones that are in place. For some examples of cities that are already on, that are up and running with this, the City of Lexington, Massachusetts decreased their approval time for code enforcement and for licensing and permitting by 75%. The City of Orlando, Florida, in creating their RFPs for solicitation, they've been able to streamline that process that it takes five to seven minutes to be able to create an RFP. Salt Lake City has gained 55% increase in operational efficiency, they've improved all their workflows. They've improved all their workflows and they've eliminated legacy data systems. Madison, Indiana saw a four-hundred percent increase in capturing records and data as they came onboard with OpenGov and they were also able to automate and streamline...
Capturing what?
Excuse me?
Capturing what?
Capturing all their records and data for the city. The other thing that they were able to do was streamline all their process and they automated thirty-two different types of permits. Warrenton, Virginia has gained two hours, two-plus hours per personnel working in community development on a daily basis and they've been able to decrease the number of citizens that have had to walk into City Hall to interact with staff. This will be an online portal. This will make it easier for businesses to pull permits online and completely automate the process. No more seeing multiple city departments as you go through the application and the permitting process. Glendale, California, when they implemented it, they were able to limit nine hundred hours during budget season to build out their budget, which is huge for the, the, the demand that puts on staff. Budget takes us roughly three months to work through a budget process. So, when they looked after they implemented and saved those nine hundred hours of staff time, that reduced the cost by fifty percent of time and money and it also gave them the ability for compensation forecasting, which is extremely important from finances perspective and my perspective, specifically when we go into contract negotiations.
Could, I'm sorry, could you say the last thing again about the, because my, I had my fingers in the wrong place.
Yeah, so, the compensation forecasting that the financial models do are extremely important when we go into labor negotiations. That way we're, we can streamline that process as well because we'll have real-time data at our fingertips and we'll be able to put the financial models in place and cost and, and do a compensation forecast.
Compensation?
Compensation forecast.
Does it bring you coffee and donuts in the morning?
I'll see, it's AI, it might.
Oh, that's all I have, thank you.
Hey, at least he finished with the best question.
You're done?
I'm done, yeah.
All right?
Sorry.
Meeting is adjourned.